Good evening. The regular meeting of the Wayne Westland Community School Board of Education is now brought to order on Monday, January 22, 2018. On behalf of the Board, I would like to welcome each and every one of you. Your attendance this evening reflects your interest in public education and is greatly appreciated. It's this time, 250.18. The pledge of allegiance, I'd like to call Amaya Anderson and Christian Baylor from Walker Winter Elementary School up.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, unencouraged, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, if you face this way, Ms. Hines is gonna read your bios that you gave to the Board.
My name is Amaya Anderson, and I am seven years old. I am a student in Ms. Madell's first grade class at Walker Winter Elementary School. My favorite school subjects are math and reading. When I'm not at school, I like to ride my bike and dance. My name is Christian Baylor, and I am six years old. I also attend Walker Winter, and I am a first grader in Ms. Madell's class. My favorite color is bright yellow. I like to play basketball, and my favorite food is macaroni and cheese.
Okay. And Mr. Buckle is gonna come down and present you too with a certificate from the Board of Education to thank you for participating this evening.
Well, you guys did really well. You're Christian, right? But you're not Amaya. Here, William. Nice to meet you again. We have a certificate here. Let me just get over here with you so I can not have my backroom to everybody. We have a certificate for you, Christian, and we're gonna give one for you too, William. And it reads in participation, excuse me, recognition of participation in the flag ceremony during the regular meeting of the Board of Education of Wayne Westland Community Schools. And I have to tell you that I think Walker Winter is a fantastic school. I really thank you guys for fortunate to go to that school and to have the principal that you have. Is your principal with you today?
Yeah.
And who is that?
Ms. Madell.
Ms. Madell. Oh, thank you, Ms. Madell. Is your name on there, Christian? How about you, William? Who's here, Christian? Brother, mom, and dad. That's fantastic. Thank you very much. Are you working here?
I'm here for the...
How do you do? Fantastic. You know, you're a great staff over in Walker Winter. I just walked through there. I can't even...
Mr. Buckaloo? Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes?
You missed somebody else, too.
Really? Oh, no!
Dan Scott is here.
Dan! Hi, Dan! You're looking good today. I don't know how we got him to put the dick without you, so... Well, thank you very much. I again thank you, William. And you guys have a seat, and we appreciate it all.
So, at this time, so everyone who wonders, I know we normally take pictures. There's gonna be a presentation by the kids, and so we're gonna do the pictures after the presentation, so we haven't forgot. Before we move on with the agenda, I need to make, I need to make, I need to have a motion to remove item number 256.18, the appointment of the Assistant Superintendent of Climate, Culture, and Social Emotional Learning, from this meeting's agenda.
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Weaver.
Second.
Supported by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call, vote please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines?
Yes.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven, zero.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item number 251.18, roll call. In attendance, Ms. Hines?
Ms. Madell?
Here.
Mr. Cox?
Present.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Present.
Dr. Weaver?
Present.
Ms. Hines?
Present.
Ms. Walker?
Present.
Let the record show seven, zero.
Motion carries. Okay. So, at this time, we're gonna move on to item number 252.18, election of officers. Every January, we do our re, what is it? Restructuring of the Board and doing all the business that we have to do to set forward as far as how the Board operates. So according to the Board Officers' elections out of the box, at this time, we're gonna start our nomination process and do, to elect new officers. So, and so we're gonna call for, just use that right thing. So at this time, we're gonna start off in order, starting with President, Vice President, and then we're gonna do Secretary, and then Treasurer. So at this time, we'll take a motion for, a nomination for President.
Mr. Buckaloo's gonna say it.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Buckaloo.
Mrs. Walker, I'd like to nominate you for President.
Okay. Any other nominations?
I'd nominate Ms. Walker for President as well.
Okay. You second it?
This we got.
Okay. That's okay. You can second it. Okay. So, I guess no more nominations? We'll close nominations, and I guess it's by acclamation, so we don't have to have a vote. So I appreciate you all believing in me and having confidence in me to be, continue to be your Board President, so I thank you. Moving on to Vice President, I'd like to nominate Carol Madell. Is there a second?
A second.
No. We don't need a, no, we need nominations. We don't have to second it. Is there another second nomination? I'm sorry, you guys. We only do this once a year, and I get so confused. Is there another nomination for Vice President? Okay. So seeing none, well, the same thing is followed as for President. It'll be by acclamation, and we don't have to do a vote, so congratulations.
Well, thank you.
At this time, I'll take a nomination for Secretary.
I'd like to nominate Mrs. Hines.
Any other nominations? Any other nominations? Okay. Same thing. Your Secretary by acclamation. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Last but least, a nomination for Treasurer.
I'd like to nominate Mr. Buckaloo then.
Any other nominations? Okay. You're by acclamation. Congratulations.
Well, thank you very much.
All right. Congratulations to all the officers. So we normally would take a five-minute break, but it looks like we don't have to change, unless anyone wants to change their seat. This is the time we can change seats if you want to. Is everybody comfortable? Everybody wants to be where they wanna be? Okay. Thank you. Moving on to item number 253.18, recognition and presentations. Dr. Holt.
Thank you, President Walker. We have two recognitions and one presentation for this evening's meeting. January is Board Appreciation Month. I would like to thank each of, each and every one of you for your hard work and dedication. Your service to the students of this district is appreciated and valued. Before I thank and acknowledge you, though, I would like to thank your spouses and families, as this work requires sacrifice from not only you, but it becomes a family affair. So thank you to Dwayne, Bill, Teresa, Claudia, Ron, Maritza, and Elijah. I would like to present each of one of you with a certificate of appreciation and a small token of my esteem, which is a gift card for Cafe Marquette.
You can. We're okay with it. You can.
You sure? You're okay? It's okay. All right. There are, so let me give you this one.
And thank you so much for that.
Thank you. The Michigan Association of School Boards would also like to thank you for your service, and we are presenting you with a certificate on their behalf. And please note on pages five and six of your agenda, there is a proclamation from Wayne Risa and our county, Wayne Risa Superintendent, and our Wayne County Regional Education Service Agency Recognition Resolution on page six.
Thank you.
I would also like to acknowledge Shawna Walker's service as Board President for 2017 and present her with his President's plaque. Thank you, Madam President.
Thank you so much. I appreciate that.
Now, we would like to present students from Walker Winter Elementary School and their principal, Mrs. Julie Madell, and Finn the Dolphin, who are here on behalf of all the students in our district to help us thank our Board Trustees for their hard work and dedication.
Do you guys?
Yay!
So we talked to the students at Walker and explained all of the hard work that the Board members do, and with cooperation of our art teacher, Mrs. Winley, she took time and created a banner that had all of our students, this signature on it. So we just wanna thank you so much for all the work that you do for us.
Very nice.
We couldn't put it through the laminate, wasn't picking it up.
Oh, no, that's okay. And we're gonna, do you have tape? And we can tape it up here? Yeah, actually, we're gonna probably tape it up there where we have the other ones at, so that we can keep it there all year round, and we'll have that up by the next meeting. You'll see that.
Okay. Where? Put it now.
They'll take, Sue can take it for us right over there on the side. We really appreciate that. Thank you so much.
A lot of time and effort went into that. Thank you.
Any other Board members have anything they wanna say?
Thank you.
Okay. Just gonna take pictures. Come on over.
How do you want us?
Kinda like a last supper. Everybody wants to be in the picture, be on the side.
Thank you so much. Thank you! I have to say, it really is a pleasure to have you join us this evening, Finn.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's great. Okay. Item B, please.
All right. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. Ken Bashaw from the Westland Goodfellows to recognize John Glenn High School's National Honor Society.
All right. So what we'll do is stick around for a second. And what we'll do is maybe he's running a little late, and we'll just adjust, so if he comes in, we'll see. So I apologize.
But if I can make a comment, I will say that I was able to attend the National Honor Society event, and you all did such an amazing job with the induction ceremony. It was absolutely magnificent. One of the best I've seen in my years in education. Well done.
Okay. So at this time, we'll do item C.
All right. So at this time, I'd like to invite Mr. John Silvery for our choice work presentation.
Thank you. Good evening. They say if you stick around in this business long enough, there's a, there's all kinds of firsts, so this is the first time I've ever followed a Dolphin at a school board meeting, as a matter of fact, or any meeting, I guess, for that matter. I do wanna thank you, before I dive into the presentation, just for the opportunity to work with you folks again. I enjoyed myself when I was here a couple of years back with strategic planning and thoroughly enjoyed myself once more. You've got wonderful members of your school community, both inside the district and through the community itself, and a lot of people very passionate about Wayne Westland schools. You should be very proud of that. So I started this back in September and had the opportunity to facilitate 26 different stakeholder meetings, starting back in September with the Superintendent Steering Committee, but then including staff members from every single one of your schools, high school students at each of your high schools, and several meetings with parents and community members. And what I did with each of them was conducted a SWOT analysis on six different grade-level configurations that the district had provided, asking within each one of those to look at what they perceived to be the strengths, opportunities, weaknesses, and threats with each of those different configurations. So the goal was not to ask them, which do you like, which do you not like, but to be a little bit analytical about each one and talk about the various aspects of each and what might be good about it, not so good, et cetera. And my job then at the end was to put it all together. So having done that, I wanna share with you some of the feedback and some of the common threads that emerged, as I got that feedback from those many stakeholders as part of your community. One of the options that they looked at was what you currently have, and that was K4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 12. Even though I think the district was, was pretty well set on moving past that, there was a desire to be certain and make sure that, that the feedback that you got from stakeholders was consistent with what the district's perceptions were, and I would have to say that they were. One of the strengths that they cited was that grade-level groupings were very similar, socially, emotionally, behaviorally, and academically, and that was certainly a strength. But having said that, there were strong feelings on the opposite end of things. The number of transitions were of great concern. A parent inconvenience was cited that goes along with that, of course, feeling that kids in fifth and sixth and seventh and eighth grades in particular weren't in buildings long enough or are not to establish relationships, and concerns for the fact that the buildings are not utilized to capacity. Overall, there just seemed to be not a lot of support, and there seemed to be kind of a feeling that the likelihood was that you were gonna be moving on from that, and I didn't see or hear too many broken hearts over that. People seemed ready to move on. So then you had three different configurations that folks were given that had three grade-level groupings. I'll go through each one of those. One was K4, 5, 8, and 9, 12. With all of these, a common thread was that people were pleased that there were fewer transitions, of course, that being a concern with what you have now. And a common thread throughout those two was that they were more developmentally appropriate. In this particular case, what was cited is it keeps lower L, pre-adolescence, and adolescence together, and people were pleased with that. The biggest concern that came out relative to this grouping was with the 5, 8 grouping in terms of the age and maturity gap, and concerned that that could lead to bullying, fighting issues due to the size and maturity differences. A lot of support for the 9, 12 grouping, and folks seemed pretty comfortable with the K4 grouping as well. Another one with three groupings was K6, 7, 8, and 9, 12. Again, people liked fewer transitions, more developmentally appropriate. Here, the concern was with the age span, with K6 feeling like it may not be a good idea to have sixth graders with kindergartners. Again, a lot of support, though, for 9 through 12, and some concern, again, that 7, 8 might be too, kind of, just those two years, a little bit too short a combination. Excuse me, skipped one. The other with the three groupings was K6, 7, 9, and 10, 12. Again, fewer transitions, folks liked that quite a bit. The two concerns here, again, K6, similar as what I mentioned before, a little bit of a concern that that age span was a bit large, and quite a bit of concern, too, for pulling ninth grade away from 10th through 12th. Concerns that, about how that would affect grad requirements, high school prep, college prep, et cetera. Worried about how that would impact ninth graders and their athletic participation, and a fear that that might lead to fewer opportunities for ninth graders, such as AP courses, et cetera. That did reinforce what I heard over and over again, is again, probably the grouping that emerged as the one that folks were most in favor of keeping throughout all of this was that 9 through 12 grouping. So, again, where people liked having three different grade-level groupings and liked some things about it. That part in particular, they were not too thrilled with. So the last two, then, that I was able to share were two large groupings, the first of those being K through 7 and 8 through 12. I will say that overall with the, these groupings, the very first reaction to these was not necessarily very positive. People looked at this and were a little bit concerned about those two very large groupings. Part of that was some concern about how that would all fit into various buildings and how that could work in that way. But as they analyzed these further, they could see, again, some strengths, some weaknesses. Really liked the fact that that means you only have one transition. If you only have two grade-level groupings, kids start at K7 and then move on to A12, and there's only one transition, in stark contrast to what you have now. Feeling that you could build up stronger relationships, connections, build community within the schools, and that that would be a positive. There was concern that the age gap was too large, and that there would be developmental, developmental and cognitive differences that would be of concern with that grouping. Again, in this one, a little bit of concern, too, that, again, you're getting away from 9, 12. And then the final grouping was K through 8, along with 9 through 12. Folks reacted positively to being back to 9 through 12, but some of those same concerns existed with the very large groupings of students, and worried about some of the older kids being with younger children. But again, support for the strong, the opportunity to build strong relationships, connections, community, et cetera, and a lot of support and a lot of love for having only one transition, and thinking about how good that would be for parents and for students. So, again, the question was not choose one of these, the question was to give feedback in those areas, and you could see in all of those, some strengths, some weaknesses. Really liked the fact that that means you only have one transition. If you only have two grade-level groupings, kids start at K7 and then move on to A12, and there's only one transition, in stark contrast to what you have now. Feeling that you could build up stronger relationships, connections, build community within the schools, and that that would be a positive. There was concern that the age gap was too large, and that there would be developmental, developmental and cognitive differences that would be of concern with that grouping. Again, in this one, a little bit of concern, too, that, again, you're getting away from 9, 12. And then the final grouping was K through 8, along with 9 through 12. Folks reacted positively to being back to 9 through 12, but some of those same concerns existed with the very large groupings of students, and worried about some of the older kids being with younger children. But again, support for the strong, the opportunity to build strong relationships, connections, community, et cetera, and a lot of support and a lot of love for having only one transition, and thinking about how good that would be for parents and for students. So, again, the question was not choose one of these, the question was to give feedback in those areas, and you could see in all of those, some strengths, some weaknesses, some opportunities, some threats. And the last thing I asked with each of these groups is to share just some general feedback on questions, suggestions they might have, including, one question was from me, were there any configurations that you didn't see presented that you would like to see the district consider as well? Overwhelmingly, the feedback there was that they would like to see the district consider K5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. That was not presented, but I heard that from virtually every group that I spoke with, and the consensus seemed to be among the people that were there that there was a lot of support for that. When you think about it, one of the advantages, a couple of advantages, one of the things folks didn't, people generally liked three groupings. One thing they didn't like about the K6 grouping was sixth graders being part of that. They seemed to like K5 together. There was support, too, again, from keep, for keeping 9, 12, and they seemed to feel that that 6, 8 configuration worked fairly well, too. So a lot of support there as well. And given that, the last step in this Phase 1, in terms of my involvement, was we brought your entire administrative staff together, and I shared basically the same type of presentation that I just shared with you, with them, and they saw all of the data on paper, too. They saw even the, kind of, the lengthier version of this to see all of the feedback. And what we asked of them was to give their feedback on, given all of this, what they would recommend the district continue to look at more closely and kind of put under the microscope going forward to decide, to help you narrow the focus and decide which of these configurations that you were gonna move forward with. So with all those folks together, we had posters basically made up that the district did a nice job of putting together that showed each of the six configurations that I had shared, as well as the K5, 6, 8, 9, 12 configuration that there seemed to be strong support for. So those seven different options were just up on the wall around the room, along with some of the feedback that was given up there as a reminder to people. What we did was we gave them each three different color, kind of sticky dots, one representing their first choice, another color representing their second choice, and another their third, and we simply turned them loose with the direction to ask them to seriously consider the feedback that they had gotten from all of your stakeholders, but also that it was important to apply their expertise and their experience as educational leaders in terms of what they saw as being what would be best for your students in the long haul. And they went out and fixed those stickers. When they were done, we pulled them down. We signed a point value to those. Their first choice was worth three points, second choice was worth two, third choice worth one, tallied them up, and what happened in terms of the rank order was, hands-down, first choice was K5, 6, 8, 9, 12, not even one of the six that we'd gotten feedback on, but the one that there seemed to be so much support for. And then the second choice was, again, pretty handily second choice. It was behind the first one, but a fair distance from the next one, was K through 8 and 9 through 12. And what the, what we had said initially was that we were looking, really, if at all possible, unless there were a couple so close that we had to consider them, to narrow the field down to two choices. These two really did separate themselves from the others in this process, and so it left us with, from those original six choices, plus the one that had been suggested, down to two, K5, 6, 8, 9, 12, and then kindergarten through eighth grade and ninth through 12th grade. So, given that, that ends my role in this and is gonna lead you into Phase 2, and in a second, I'm gonna turn it over to Jim to talk about that, but before I do, I wanna invite you to ask any questions of me that you might have about the process and the information I shared.
Any questions from the Board?
I just have one question. Because before, we used to have the K through 5, 6, 8, 9, 12, and it worked very well. How long would it take to implement something like that if we did decide to do that?
That I'm going to entrust Jim to speak to a little bit more, in terms of even how it is that you're going about really looking more closely at those two options. I believe that'll be part of it.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
You said you had 26 sessions?
Yes, 26.
About how many parents participated in those 26 sessions?
Parent participation was not as strong as we would hope for, but what I will say, and I neglected to mention, what made up for that somewhat was that there was an online survey put out, because there was recognition that quite often, people just can't make it to these meetings, they have other things going on, and there were 139 participants in the online survey. So where we would have liked to have seen greater parent participation in those meetings, it made up for it somewhat in the online participation, which did include, I don't remember the number, but it did include a healthy number of parents within that.
Somewhere in the neighborhood of 200 responses?
139 for the online survey.
For the online?
Yes.
Add to that the in-person?
From parents?
Yeah.
Oh, gosh. From the three meetings we had, and we had a smattering elsewhere, probably in-person, I don't think it was, it exceeded maximum, that probably was about 25 people.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Any other questions? Dr. Weaver?
Was there any discussion of readiness for eighth graders to enter into the general flow of high school, and in terms of how many suspensions we're having, and how many of our freshmen are blowing their first semester coursework because they not quite there, mature enough to, was there any discussion there?
So you're talking about discussion of the current, what you're describing is difficulty with eighth grade transition to ninth?
Eighth grade transition to ninth, yes.
There wasn't any direct discussion of that, but bear in mind, my role with this was really just to kind of frame the, the points of discussion, ask people to share their feedback. There wasn't a lot of that. There was a little bit of feedback, if I can recall, with the one configuration that had eighth through 12th graders together, and some thought that there could be some advantage to having eighth graders with the ninth through 12th graders, and that perhaps would ease that transition, but then conversely, some concern that I heard that would that push the problem down to where now you'd have that same issue with eighth graders as they made the transition. And then with the other option that was given, as I recall, where you had ninth graders with younger kids, and you had just 10, 12, again, I recall some comments about how perhaps those ninth graders would be more ready by the time they got to high school, but then, as I stated conversely, there were a lot of concerns, far more that offset that, about the fact that it may not be great for your ninth graders to be separated from the 10th through 12th graders. Overall, there seemed to be, or not even seemed to be, there was far more support for making sure those ninth graders stuck with the 10th through 12th.
I just think I'd like to see in the future some discussion of the suspensions and the, the coursework.
Sure.
Anyone else? Thank you, Mr. Savary.
Thank you.
So, you said that Mr. Larson Schiler is going to take the second half of your presentation?
Yes.
Thank you, John. All I'm really doing is introducing what the next step is, and that's Phase Two. We're currently in the middle of Phase Two. We are starting to come to a point where we'd like to bring that to the board. We'd like to set up a finance committee meeting, and then February 12th, hopefully introduce that to the board.
Any questions?
Okay. Thank you. Before we go onto item number 254.18, I probably should have mentioned this at the beginning, but we're going to go back to the forums that we did for citizen comments, and I'm going to have Ms. Heinz read it off, but the main reason for going back to this is so that we can have, keep track of who spoke your question, and to make sure that someone got back in touch with you within a timely manner. And so, it'll help for our administrative assistants to, over there, to be, to be able to keep track of everything, and to make sure that everybody is getting the proper follow-up. So, we're going to go on to item number 254.18, citizen comments, agenda items. Ms. Heinz, if you could read that blue form, and if anyone has any comments for citizen comments, you can fill it out afterwards, but if you have, if you're going to end up speaking at the end, please fill out one now for the, for the following comments. Thank you.
Please complete this form and turn it to the board secretary if you wish, if you wish to speak during the citizens' comments portion of this agenda. This will ensure that your concerns will be addressed within one week of this meeting by the superintendent or a member of her team. Citizens' questions and comments provide the board with invaluable input and feedback concerning school district business. At the same time, it is not realistic to expect the board or individual board trustees to immediately respond to your questions or comments. Instead, appropriate cases, the board will refer questions and comments to the district's superintendent for review, study and input from the action based on a full and complete understanding of the facts and ramifications. We devote a half an hour of this time for the agenda items only, and another half an hour after the agenda items for general questions and comments. During the citizens' questions and comments portions of our meeting, we ask that, since we limit our portion to a half an hour, that you please limit your comments and questions for more than three minutes, and your copy of the agenda list and rules and regulations that apply to citizens', questions, and comments. Please take a few minutes before you speak to review those rules and regulations. Speakers who choose to disregard these rules and regulations will not be permitted to continue their presentation.
So, do we have anyone that needs to speak on the consent agenda? Okay. You're playing tricks.
And that paper will be filled out?
It should be with the agendas on the table.
And I will have it to the secretary, Dan?
Yes, thank you. Okay, Ms. Sample, go ahead.
Timer.
Here you go.
There's nothing. It's nothing. It was up there, and then, nothing.
There it is?
Is it running?
All right.
Not running.
Starting now?
There it goes. Okay. There is a lot in the past prior meeting agenda packet for minutes. I read through them all, looked at them briefly right here before the class, before the meeting, because none of this was online. However, question that I keep asking has not answered, and I do see that the two new assistant, deputy superintendents, whatever their titles are, are in attendance, and one is not here. I still keep asking the board, are we still, I see somebody is up for review, for being submitted, for the other one. Are we going to have five, or is it going to be four? Are we going to have more? Kind of want to know that. This is a financial burden that is going to be incurred, and want to know what is going to happen with that.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. Moving on to item number 255.18, consent agenda. At this time, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Moved by Dr. Weaver?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Madell. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madison?
No, there are items on it that I disagree with.
Ms. Madell?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Heinz?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Left the record show six and one.
Thank you, motion carries. Moving on to item number 257.18, review and approval of business services and finance items. Mr. Larson Schiler?
Thank you, ma'am president. Tonight is the January amendment. We do have the information out on the table, and all the board members received the packet. We also met with finance committee, we met with the union representatives and leadership council before this meeting, and what I'm going to do is, I'm not going to go through the booklet unless you have questions. I'm going to go through the PowerPoint that I sat on your desk. What this will do is highlight a lot of the areas that have changed. So, if you look at the, okay. So, the first page that you have in front of you here, what I've done is, I've learned throughout the years to sort of highlight what I want you to see, and what I'm going to discuss. So, in the total revenues, you can see in the first line, it has increased $4,574,000. Total expenditures increased by 1.1 million, 430, and so the difference is a $3,144,156. So, going on, I will highlight first, revenues. The three items I want to point out here are the ones that are highlighted. First, state foundation increased almost $1.5 million. State aid, MIPSers, this is the amount of money that we receive to turn around and pay the state for the retirement above about 25 percent, and so this is a flow-through, that's 1.8 million, and special education reimbursement, that's about 1.6 million. Now, I'm going to go into more detail on each one of those items. The first one is our state aid, our foundation. You can see that we had projected 300 student loss, and we actually came in at 109 student loss. So, I mean, that is cause for celebration, really is, about 200 student increase. That 191 students represents almost $1.5 million. Now, normally, I'm coming to you and saying the opposite, but what I'm going to highlight is some of the reasons why the increase. We had some one-time items this year. Wayne Memorial High School started an online program that is, represents 66 FTEs. And then alternative education is at its maximum now, that was about 29 students. So, these are items that I don't anticipate happening again. You know, hopefully, the online program will increase. The alternative education is maxed out, so without these items, we would have been at enrollment of 11,168. Still an increase of 96, but going forward, that's what we'll look at as far as doing our projections. We don't have our projections for next year, so I just wanted to highlight some of the items. Moving that forward, next page is history of our state aid and FTE review. This is going back to 2014, 15. That year, we had lost 315 students, the next year, 262 students, then 245, and then again, as I pointed out, 109 students. On state aid, our foundation, what I want to point out is that you can see, as our students decrease, our foundation decreases. So, this year, we had an uptick, and I wish I would have put the year that Inkster dissolved, because we actually increased by six to eight students. So, you would have seen an increase in our foundation, and then a state decrease, and now this increase. We'll have to look at, again, what the projections will be for next year. Going on to the next page, this, I just wanted to compare what our projection was to what our amendment is. So, on this page, you can see that our projection was for 300 student loss. It should have, we're projecting 11,072 students, we have 11,263. So, that change in foundation, again, as it stays, $1.5 million. And the other item that I'm going to talk about in just a second is the state aid reimbursement, that's about $1.6 million. There any questions? Nope? Okay. The next item is our calculation for state education reimbursement. What, what you do here is, we have two forms, one's called a 4094, which is, you calculate all your transportation, and then a 4096, you calculate all your special education costs, staffing, and supplies, everything. So, this is actually showing an increase in transportation. Normally, we calculate about 3.3 million, this year, we're calculating 5.1 million. That translates 70.4 percent. We get that reimbursed in the following year. So, we increased to 3.6 million, coupled with the 29.6 percent on the regular instruction. We're coming in, this year, we're projecting $10,875,000 compared to 9.4 million, so that's an increase, again, of about $1.5 million.
Great job.
And all that is, is taking a deep dive into all of our costs in transportation, so we're looking at things and seeing where everything was used, so. We didn't increase the cost, we just identified the cost differently. Moving on to expenditures, this is just, the expenditures are up $1.4 million, and I just have a brief history here, which, I'll go into detail on the next page. The first two items is, they're related, you have added needs and pupil support. You can see that the added needs decreased, $750,000, pupil support increased 1.4. A lot of this is same staff. What, when Charlie Hallman looked at the special education, he was looking, and we termed special education student, or teachers as TCRRs, you have to be a TC or an RR. So, what he, he did is, he moved the RRs down to pupil support where they actually should be, and then we additionally hired seven additional staff, based on need. So, that represents, it's, it's really only an increase of 700,000, and that represents those seven staff. Onto the next page, decrease in pupil services, that really goes along with some of the information to come. When we passed the enhancement levy, we said that $1.1 million was going to go to instruction, 1.1 million to buses, 1.1 to staffing, and then 1.1 in case we needed a fund balance. We don't need a fund balance because, well, you haven't seen it yet, but we're above 5 percent, which is sort of left that out of the bag there, but, so now that we have identified where we're going to spend the instructional money, this represents the $406,600. That is going for social, emotional supports. So, that is the staffing that we have put in place now, or about to put in place. So, then, the, going down below, the next item would be a decrease in federal and state HICA tax. We've discussed this before, this is the tax that we pay for healthcare usage, we pay a certain percent on all the usage. Mesa this year has built that into the premium. Before, we just paid the premium, and then we had to pay the HICA tax, we counted for that in a line item, which was administration, for lack of being able to identify it to the premiums, so now that will follow the premiums. Much better way of reporting it. Before I turn the page, it's not on here, but the other item that I'd like to point out is where we're using instructional money, the enhancement. Seth Winsell came to us and stated that we have an opportunity to spend funding to get $1 million. So, this is through the E rate, we are an 80/20 district, so we're able to spend $192,000 to get technology, that's the stuff behind the walls, it's, you know, on the walls, it's Wi-Fi. So, we spend the 192, federal government matches with $800,000. So, well, that would be $1 million. This was a five-year program, we're afraid that that program might dissolve next year, so instead of letting that opportunity slip away, we're taking advantage of it. And then I would say that, as we're looking at our bond work, all of this can follow where we go to another building. So, if we were to close three buildings, we can take all that equipment out, and we can move it. So, this, this, I guess the equipment is portable, in that respect. Okay, the last item I have, as far as the expenditure adjustments, you may have heard that we're going to reimburse employees 3 percent of their MIPSers. This is a great thing. The downside is, the district is going to have to pick up the FICA, because when we dispersed the money, we did not take out FICA. So, now, it was not taxed, and now, when we distributed it, we have to tax it, and we have to take the FICA. So, the one way of looking at this, $361,000, we didn't pay it then, but we're paying it now.
Okay.
Okay, and the, okay, the bottom line, as we might say, is the estimated ending fund balance. So, if you look down at the bottom, the beginning fund balance, we're estimating a $9.7 million. This is what we estimated last year, and then when the actual came in, our ending fund balance was $12.1 million. We were estimating a deficit based on the increases that we paid to employees last year, and we were going to deficit spend, and we will next year also. We would have been at 8.6. But because of the items that I had mentioned, the increase in enrollment, the increase in the special education reimbursement, we should end the year with $14,179,714 fund balance, which is 12.9 percent.
That's good stuff. Any, anything, any questions from the board? Dr. Weaver?
Sorry, there's no page number on here, but the salary adjustments to reflect current personnel placements, does that also include the hiring of new assistants, or?
Yes. We, everything is built in for the portion of the year. For instance, Ms. Curry started six months into the year, so six months of her salary will be in there.
Anyone else?
You had mentioned 406,000 for social, emotional support?
Mm-hmm.
I was just a bit confused on that, on where that lies. Is that separate from the salary adjustments?
No, that's within the salary adjustments, and they weren't all general administration, because they're, the way we code them for state accounting, they could be in different areas. If you're looking for general administration for- If you're looking for general administration for 406,600, you're not going to see it.
Okay.
Because they're all throughout the general fund.
So this is all of what the intent plan is, and that is without including any hiring of any new potential staff? Are we expecting to hire anymore?
I built in all the staff that we identified to hire this year. Any staff that would be hired next year are not built into the budget. That will be built in when we come for the June, June budget. And so this includes everybody, and then the enhancement money that was instruction will be more than enough to pay for the increases that we have here in the general fund.
And, and how many new staff are we expected to hire?
New staff? I would have to get that number for you. I mean, I was looking at the dollars more than the number, sorry.
That information was provided in the organizational charts that were provided to the board.
Can you give me that number, please? The community didn't get that.
There, well, right now, it depends on what, how you look at the organizational chart, but right now, we're looking at about eight new staff that are within this, and then you have various other staff that are coming out of categorical funds to service our site needs.
So can we share with the community what that number would be?
You mean total altogether?
Yes.
Absolutely. Once we calculate it all, we can. We don't have, because we're looking at current staff, and then also purchasing new staff, we haven't really looked at, okay, this is exactly how many new staff all around that we're purchasing. But it was provided to you in the organizational charts.
Yes. I see my organizational charts, but I cannot share those with the community. That is my private board packet, and that would be breaking my oath.
Any other questions? Okay. Does that complete your report?
Yeah.
All right.
Unless you have a question.
Yep. Okay. So, so now we had to do B. No, where were we at? We just did A, right? So now we're going to do item B, designation of the financial auditors.
First, second motion.
I'm sorry?
First, second motion.
Oh, you gotta do a vote on it. I'm sorry.
Please.
So we'll take a motion. We'll take a motion to accept Mr. Larson Schidler's adjustment to the budget.
Support?
Supported by Ms. Hines. I mean, motion by Ms. Hines, any support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Buckaloo?
Cox.
Cox, I'm sorry. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Hines, yes? Ms. Madison?
No.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
No.
And Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 5-2.
Yes. Motion carries. Moving on to item B, please.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am president. Item B is, I'd like to recommend designation of our auditors as Plant Moran. Plant Moran has been with us for some time. They help us throughout the year, and they've actually been very helpful as far as counting for the 3% in employee reimbursements.
I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Cox, supported by Ms. Medel. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item C, please.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am president. Item C, I'm recommending lunch price increase for 2018-19, and I will describe that MDE is requiring the district to increase lunch prices to meet federal free and reduced lunch reimbursement guidelines. Cost of a paid lunch has to be within a certain percentage of that reimbursement rate. Our lunch prices have not been raised for at least seven years, and they are at $2.50 for K6, and $3 for 7 through 12 for a reimbursable lunch. The 17-18 reimbursement rate is $3.31 for a free lunch, and $2.91 for reduced lunches. For 17-18, the district will have to pay the food service fund 10 cents on every paid lunch for a total of $17,007. If prices are not increased, the amount will approximately double for 18-19. Therefore, I'm recommending the minimum increase of 29 cents, or 25 cents, sorry, per meal. Otherwise, we will need to in, increase lunch prices, well, we could have looked at 50 cents, but we'll probably be looking at every two to three years, increasing to keep up with the inflation.
So what you're asking is for a 25 cent?
25 cents for next year.
For next year?
Yes.
Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion.
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Medel. Any support?
Second.
Supported by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you. Motion carries. Item D, please.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am president. Item D is recommendation to auction buses and sell other scrap items. Since we received the 10 buses this year, we had our Michigan State Police inspection. Since that inspection, we've decommissioned 16 buses that we need to either sell or scrap. We can place eight of these on the bid through Bittergie, because they are special education buses with lifts. The lifts might bring in, people see the lifts, and they can use those as parts, and they also have AC in them. The other eight, we would sell for scrap. We've used, we sort of part the buses, and most of these buses will not be driven off, they'll be carted off. And we also have a, the garage service truck that we recently replaced, that we'd like to put on auction also.
At this time, I'll take a motion.
I have a question.
Mm-hmm.
After the motion.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Motion.
Moved by Mr. Buckaloo. Any support?
Support.
Supported by Mrs. Medel. Any discussion? Dr. Weaver?
Are these decommissioned buses, before they're gone to the scrap, or are we taking decent parts off of them, reusing them?
Absolutely. You know, but you're, you're looking at engines with 300,000 miles, 200,000 miles. We take the parts we can, a lot of it, we take the seats especially, if, you know, we take whatever parts are serviceable on another bus. Largely, the reason that I'm asking to re, actually get rid of these buses now, is they're clogging up our yard, so, well, for lack of better terms, we are unable to plow, because, and our drivers are walking in between them. We actually had a driver that fell and sprained the wrist and was out a couple days. So it's also a safety issue to get these off of our lot.
Thank you.
Any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the floor, and take a roll call vote at this time.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you. Motion carries. And the final item E, please.
Okay. Thank you again, ma'am president. Our last item is, I'm requesting that we participate in the Michigan School Business Officials, MSBO, bus purchasing program to lease 10 buses for 2018-19. This is informational only. Normally, what's happened the last two years, we've had the Michigan State Police inspection early in the year, so this, knowing this, decommissioning these buses allows us to participate in a statewide bid. So I think it's advantageous for the district to participate in this, and then also, what's happened in the past, is once we order buses after this, this takes priority. So all the buses that are purchased, they go, and they go to the factory, and they're making these buses. So when we place an order, we receive ours in October or November. This will assure us that we'll get the buses at the start of the school year.
And you just, was that just information?
That's just informational.
You don't vote on that?
Yeah. That, we'll bring that back once it's, the bid is done.
Okay. All right. Sounds good. Thank you. Moving on to item number 258.18, representatives and designations. So every year at this time, you know, we have to pick a 2018 WACOSPA representative and the 2018 MASB representative. Now, the WACOSPA representative is different from what I do. It's not, I serve on the WACOSPA board, executive board. This is what Mrs. Medel normally does when she goes to the Wayne Risa meetings. Correct?
Yes.
Okay. And then we know that the MASB representative is, does, is the representative for our, Wayne, Michigan, I'm sorry, you guys, I had a migraine, and I took some medicine. So I'm not going to even, I'm going to be very honest with you. I took some medicine to try to combat this migraine, and so I think the medicine is taking the best of me. But the MASB representative for Michigan Association of School Board, so we don't normally do a vote, we just, we do a vote if some, if there's more than one people, person. So is anyone interested? How do you, what's your pleasure?
If somebody wants to be representative to WACOSPA, they're welcome to it. I've done it for a lot of years, so.
So, Mrs. Medel, if you can explain to you?
Do I want to do it again? I'll do it if nobody else wants it.
If you explain what the, what dates you do normally go, and the times.
What it is, is that you attend the WACOSPA meetings, and usually, the big thing comes when the, the voting comes at the end of the, the year. You represent, you're the person doing the voting for the school district, so.
So like when Wayne Risa has their elections, and we decide who we're gonna pick or give our vote to, the WACOSPA representative will cast the vote? So it looks like it's?
Go ahead, Tom. You want to do it? Knock yourself out.
I would like to do it.
Okay. All right. So Mr. Buckaloo is going to be the representative for the 2018 year, and for the MASB representative, I think it was you last time, Dr. Weaver, if I'm not mistaken?
Yes.
Do you want to continue that, or isn't someone else interested?
If no one's interested, I'll take care of it. If someone else is, that's fine.
Okay. Well, no one's jumping at the bit, so it's yours.
Thank you.
So Dr. Weaver will continue in that position. Okay. So moving on to item number 259.18, designation of the newspapers. Dr. Holt?
We are asking for the board's support to designate the Observer and Eccentric Newspaper, the Telegram Newspaper, the Journal Newspaper, and the Wayne Dispatch as the newspapers of record for the Wayne Westland Community School District for 2018. They have continued to cover news stories in the district, and we have a great mutual working relationship with each one of them.
Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Moved by Dr. Weaver, supported by Ms. Hines. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 260.18, review and approval for the legal firms. Dr. Holt?
We are asking for the board's support to continue to use the following legal firms. Clark Hill for general counsel, labor, workman's compensation, bonds, elections, finance, contracts, student discipline and expulsion, environmental and specialty matters. Lusk Alfredson PLC for general counsel, labor, special education matters, student discipline and expulsion, specialty matters, and board policy. Trune Law Firm for PC, PC for elections. Kelly Cawthorn for governmental and legislative affairs. Miller Canfield for finance, bonds, and miscellaneous.
Okay. At this time, I'll take a motion.
Move approval.
Moved by Mr. Cox, supported by Dr. Weaver. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 261.261.18, Head Start Monthly Report. Ms. Medel?
As required by federal law, all of you have received a copy of the Head Start Monthly Reports for November and December. I need a motion to accept the November and December Head Start Monthly Reports as provided.
So at this time, I'll take a motion to accept Mrs. Medel's report. We've given a motion by Ms. Hines. Any support?
Support.
Support by Mr. Buckaloo. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes? Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show 7-0.
Thank you. Motion carries. Moving on to item number 262.18, Board of Education Committee Reports. Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes, thank you. The following is a summary of the minutes of the Finance Committee meeting of January 10th, 2018. The meeting was brought to order at 11:05 a.m. Board members present were Tom Buckaloo, Carol Medel substituting for David Cox, and Shawna Walker substituting for Fred Weaver. Wayne Westland staff present were Dr. Shelley Holt, Jim Larson Schidler, and John Albrecht. Sue Rosson was present to take minutes. Jim Larson Schidler announced that the Office of Retirement Services will be sending the district $4.8 million to distribute to employees who had the funds deducted from their paychecks from July 1, 2010, to June 30, 2012. Jim Larson Schidler gave an update of the choice work findings and a brief overview of the current millage rate and the projected rate should the bond pass. The move-in date for the Tinkham lease is February 1. We have two bus leases that expire in March. Jim Larson Schidler recommended that the district purchase the two buses with enhanced millage funds. Mr. Larson Schidler also revealed plans to lease 10 additional buses for the 2018-19 school year. Mr. Larson Schidler discussed the recommendation to approve a 25-cent increase in lunch prices for the 2018-19 school year. He explained the reason for the increase, and stated that it is anticipated that the district should not have to raise lunch prices for two years after this increase. Jim Larson Schidler reviewed the amendment to the 2017-18 budget. The committee had discussion and questions regarding fund balance, pupil enrollment, special education, reimbursements, and staffing. Mr. Larson Schidler reviewed the list of banks that the district would like to include in the resolution for depository and investing for 2018. The meeting was adjourned at 12:05 p.m.
Thank you, Mr. Buckaloo. Moving on to item number 263.18, Superintendent Evaluation. So the board is required by law to evaluate the superintendent on a yearly basis, and even though Dr. Holt hasn't been with us that long, we still are required by law to cover the time that she has been here for the 2017 calendar year. The evaluation includes the following components: governance and board relations, community relations, staff relations, business and finance, and instructional leadership. Dr. Holt received a total score of 99% rating, or a highly effective, or a high, highly effective rating. The score was comprised by the following scores: governance of board relations, 3.9 points; community relations, 3.96 points; staff relations, 3.91 points; business and finance, four points; and instructional leadership, four points. On Section G, other required components of the evaluation, Dr. Holt received a score of 99% rating for a highly effective. The scores for this section of the evaluation was comprised of the following scores: professional practice, 3.96 points; progress towards district-wide goals, four points. Due to the fact that Dr. Holt was not employed as the superintendent during the 2016-2017 school year for the student growth component of the evaluation and the criteria set by Michigan Associations of School Board, the board chose not to evaluate her on this portion of the evaluation. Based on the criteria set forth by the MASB, Dr. Holt would be held accountable for student growth as measured by NWEA MAX. At this time, I need a motion to accept the superintendent's summary evaluation as presented.
Motion.
At this time, or, oh my God. Oh my God. Motion by Ms. Hines. Any support?[1795.13]
Support.
Support by Mrs. Medel. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Ms. Madison?
Yes.
Ms. Medel?
Yes.
Mr. Cox?
Yes.
Mr. Buckaloo?
Yes.
Dr. Weaver?
Yes.
Ms. Hines, yes, Ms. Walker?
Yes.
Let the record show seven zero.
Thank you, motion carries. At this time, moving on to item number 264.18, Superintendent Report, Dr. Holt.
Thank you, Madam President, and thank you for your faith in my leadership. Um, I wanted to address the issue here with the number of positions. These are the organizational charts. There is a stack of them outside to make sure that everyone can have a copy should they want a copy of the organizational charts, which speaks to the fact that, to answer the question about how many assistant superintendents there will be, I want to address that hopefully communally so that we can all be very clear. Currently in our organizational chart, as it stands as a district, we have three assistant superintendents and two senior executive directors. And within the restructuring and in looking at the socio-emotional, climate and culture, particularly discipline needs at our schools, and recognizing that, that work needs to occur at the central office level, and at the moment, we did not have personnel to work on this very dire issue that is occurring at our school sites, which speaks to the number of incidents that we're seeing, it speaks to the challenges that our teachers and our bus drivers and our custodians and everyone in our district is experiencing with our challenging student behaviors. As such, we need to build our skill set. And in order to build our skill set, we need to build our personnel to be able to provide these supports to our school-level personnel who can then shift their responses in working with children and enable a much more cohesive working environment. So, to answer the question, on the front of the org chart, you will see that we had three assistant superintendents and two executive directors. I have shifted the org chart to trificate instruction, which means, as opposed to one person being in charge of instruction, there will now be three people in charge of instruction. And then we keep a CFO and a senior executive director for community, family, and governmental relations. This is to answer the need for our tier-two level of supports, which require our community participation. Research and evidence-based practices let us know that if we are not connected with our community, if we do not understand the needs of our community, and if we are not addressing the needs of the community with the community hand in hand, then we're not going to see the expected results that we want to see with our children. So, as such, the organizational chart has five at executive cabinet. It still has five at executive cabinet. We've just shifted the positions a bit. Also, in answer to the question of how many were here, if I turn to the, I want to say it's the fifth page, because what we did was then break down each and every department to be able to provide those supports. On the fifth page, you will see a chart that looks something like this. It has a lot of purple on it. And what it is, is that it's the development of an entire department to deal with the climate, culture, and socio-emotional needs, which is strategic goal number two in our strategic plan. So, we needed some folks to work on that. The addition of seven individuals, I misspoke, it was not eight, it is seven, that are coming particularly out of the general fund include: an assistant superintendent of climate and culture, an executive director of climate, culture, and socio-emotional learning, a climate and culture specialist, which may be labeled a climate and culture coach, but that funding is coming out of a different source. So, in answer to your question, it's hard to delineate what's exactly coming out of the general fund, but we are working on a chart to do that. The climate and culture coaches and the socio-emotional specialist coach both come out of thirty-one A and Title One, or Title One funding. Then we have, in addition to that, a director of student services to help us with the enrollment challenges and discipline challenges, specifically someone to get discipline cohesive amongst our district, so it's not different from school to school, classroom to classroom, building to building, person to person. We need to have someone to help with that. We also needed an administrative assistant for that assistant superintendent, and we are returning to having a board secretary, honestly, because of the number of parent and, and community challenges that we're receiving at the district-level office. We need more folks to be able to handle some of those challenges in the interim. So, that is the addition of seven positions. Additionally, what we're also adding is, we want to put a person at each school site where this is their main and total responsibility to assist with climate, culture, socio-emotional, and discipline at our school sites. That involves, out of thirty-one A funds, providing twenty-three at this time. We're looking at some other numbers to see if we can provide more. Ideally, right now, what we're in conversations about is one for every elementary school, two for the middles, and two for the high schools, to be able to have folks that are trained. The challenge is, we have this on paper and it looks beautiful. Now, we need to get the people into places, people into place, and then get the training going in order to get them ready to actually service children. This is the work we've been doing since I arrived here on September nineteenth, and getting to this point has been a rocky road, but a necessary road, because the interest of our students and our schools is of the first, in my mind. Second, in my mind, I'll be honest, after the kids, is increasing the number of, the amount of compensation. So, in order to do this and not touch our fund balance and not touch the money that we want to use for, to elevate the level of compensation, we had to be very strategic and thoughtful in how we organize this organizational chart. I will state again, if you have any questions, these are outside on the table if you would like a copy of one, and also, if you want to discuss it, if you want answers to any questions around it, please feel free to ask me. But I want to point out again and again, we are not using the funds that we would use in order to increase compensation, nor are we going to put the, the safety of our students at risk, because this may be moving faster for some folks than others. We have to move fast. There are some serious challenges that we need to address post haste. As such, I have provided, because communication is a major challenge right now, we have started today with our first official weekly communique. I say official because I put out one before to kind of test the waters out a bit, and it worked. So, we're looking at doing a weekly communique to all staff in the district at every level of the organization for any questions that are coming up, challenges or issues that we, we need to have addressed. So, in this week's communique, we talked about what's going on in central office. So, I just talked briefly about this organizational chart. The second question I answer is, okay, so where did the money come from? Folks want to know. I mean, are we, we've given a lot of concessions over the years. Where did the money for this come from? And Mr. Larson Scheidler did a phenomenal job of explaining that we had four point four million in the enhancement millage, one point one for buses, for fund balance, for staffing, and then for instructional purposes. As opposed to purchasing more stuff, what I chose to do instead was to develop the department that I was hearing from, when I say everyone, everyone, that we needed, from staff, from parents, from community, from central office, that we needed some support in socio-emotional and climate and culture. It was even to the point where folks were going, well, what is that exactly? And when I explained it a bit, they went, yes, that's exactly what we need. So, we talk about where that money come from, and as opposed to using the one point one on stuff, we chose to use about four hundred sixty thousand of it on this work that we're doing with building a climate and culture division in our district, and then about two hundred thousand roughly, it's one ninety?
One ninety-two.
One ninety-two, thank you, sir. One ninety-two on the E-rate funds to purchase the E-rate wiring inside of our technology, because as we have purchased a lot of technology, as you know, with brick buildings, they, we, we, it's sometimes hard to get internet. So, we have to make sure the wiring is very strong in our buildings. Another point to that, which I want to echo, which Mr. Larson Scheidler said, is that the, because we also know we're moving towards consolidation of school sites and buildings, we want to make sure that if anything we put inside the buildings can be moved in case we decide to consolidate that school site, so that we are not putting anything into buildings that cannot be used. The next page in the weekly communique talked about, I asked the question, well, why so fast? And did it have to be such a high level of position? Ultimately, in order to track the best, it had to be a higher elevation of position. Also, to make sure that folks understand that instruction, professional learning of, of all of our communities of learners, and I mean that from every level of the organization, and climate and culture are equal when it comes to, to really solving the instructional challenges that we have. We couldn't say, well, this one is this important and this one is this important, and it just wouldn't work that way. They are all equally important in, in meeting the needs of our children and our families. We also shifted Jim's title to being CFO, COO, because we had to look at what was happening in our instruction department. They were taking care of instruction and operations. And as we know with any, if you've been a principal, if operations is, if there's a challenge in operations, that is the focus. If the water main breaks, we're not concerned right now with what English lesson you're on. We're concerned with making sure that we take care of the water main issues. And so, we wanted to separate instruction and operations, and as such, many of the operational functions have been shifted to operations, so that our instructional department can focus on providing support in instruction. And why so fast? It was mainly because of what's happening in the, in the school sites. If the challenges I was hearing about in September, October, November, when I was going to the school sites, were in, in any way as serious as folks were describing them to me, it is inevitable that when we come to December, January, February, and move into March, it's going to escalate, because that's what happens. It's just the trajectory of the way discipline and behavior in schools works. So, it had to be addressed immediately, and so the best I could do was to start getting a department to deal with that. I also talk about restructuring versus reorganization, because there was a challenge with, well, what do you mean? Do you, what is restructuring? Are we all going to have jobs? The main thing I want to point out is that in a restructuring, you do a restructuring when you believe that the talent to solve the challenges exists in the district. I believe that the talent we have in Westland is second to none. We have the folks that know what to do. We need to build our supports and build our toolbox, but I have people who love children. I have people who to sacrifice for our children. You guys know I call them my babies. And I have people, other people, that are now calling them their babies. I have staff who worked tireless hours for our children. That is not the need for a reorganization. A reorganization is when you do not believe the talent exists, and it's kind of like you have to clean house and bring in other folks. As evidenced by the actions so far, I do believe we have the talent here, and here in Wayne Westland, we can solve our own challenges, once we get the training and the, and the supports that we need, and the people and the places to do the work. I also go through the process. We use the Center for Educational Leadership's guide for central office transformation. The Center for Educational Leadership is the same organization that we use to adopt our five D and four D, as we affectionately call it, the teacher and administrator evaluation system. This was work that was done over about the past two years or so, and we've entered into now having the evaluation system in this way. We needed to structure central office to support it, and they had several guiding documents that would help us with that transformation. One of the major things that the Central, Center for Educational Leadership focuses on is the support for the principalship and leadership. As such, that is where we started as an organization when I came here, was looking at our principal leaders and figuring out how to build their toolbox first, and then they can build the toolbox of their school sites. So, I will, I wasn't planning on doing that much of an in-depth overview on that, but I will be out here afterwards for any questions or thoughts around that. I do want to now acknowledge our Young Inventors Showcase. As you see on the screens, we had an amazing group of children that were at School Craft, I was trying to remember where I was, School Craft last week, who came up with some of the most wonderful inventions that showed us that our kids here in Wayne Westland are amazing. Last year, they managed to take first and second place overall. This year, we didn't come out as lucky, but next year, we're going for it again. I have to thank Mrs. Kim Mandrell. I don't want to mess up her name at all. Mrs. Kim Mandrell, she does the, this program at both Stevenson and Franklin Middle Schools. She was absolutely phenomenal. The kids did a great job, and I just want to acknowledge the hard work of our staff and our team that, that did attend. Another piece I want to address is the, I want to congratulate our employees on their movement. I want to congratulate Emily Hawthorne, who is now the principal at Graham Elementary. I want to congratulate Matt Provost, who is now the principal at Marshall Elementary. We also have some movement at Taft Elementary. Their principal, Dr. Schofield, will be coming in to fill into the assistant principal position at Marshall, and we will have Mrs. Phyllis Atkins, who will complete the year as we post the Taft position, as Dr. Schofield has resigned effective the end of the year. And I also want to thank and appreciate our three, or two that are here, but three executive cabinet members. Mrs. Jen Curry, who is our assistant superintendent of standards, learning and innovation. Mrs. Rebecca Peck, who is our senior executive director of community, family, and governmental relations. And Mrs. Rebecca Peck is assistant superintendent of professional learning, and Mrs. Jill Simmons is senior executive director of community, family, and governmental relations. Last thing I just want to point out is that folks know that we are getting the O R S refunds. It is important to note that Wayne Westland is looking to release those refunds as soon as possible. We, as always in Wayne Westland, we want to be out in front. So, today, we had meetings with our union leadership to confirm how we wanted to release those funds, and then we are waiting on some information from Wayne Risa. As soon as we get that information, we will begin to cut the checks, and it actually won't be cut checks for everyone. If you are, please look on the website for more information, because it'll let you know whether or not you're going to get a cut check, whether or not it's going to go into your direct deposit, or how those funds will be dispersed. I also want to point out that we have the use of Clever Badges at home, and that is the next slide here. Now, our students can log in at home on Compass Learning using their Clever Badge. This is really important for our kindergarten and first grade students, as we're looking at that third grade reading lot and improving what we can, can do at home. So, if your child comes home with that Clever Badge and you have a laptop or a, one of these iPads, you can tell I'm not the most techno, I don't know all the names of all the stuff, but if you have it, they have a little badge, they can swipe in front of it, it can log them in, and they can get into the same programs that they are in at the school site. So, you see them up there on the screen, and the websites are, are also posted. I also want to thank the members of the youth mentorship program. They had an amazing benefit this week, and we want, look forward to continuing that program. Finally, I want to address the program changes that we're making district-wide. Over the last three years, under my predecessor, of whom I have amazing respect, she managed to walk us through a process to really evaluate our programs district-wide. As such, now we are ready to make some decisions, and they are tough decisions. We're looking at making adjustments to our shared time programs, we're looking at making adjustments to our adult ed programs, leisure programs, and our tag program. The Tag Parent Advisory is up and running, so that we can look at further changes that need to be made, and the tag, shared time, adult ed, and leisure are being led by our assistant superintendent of ed services, Mr. Albrecht. The communications and the exiting process are under his leadership. Thank you all for everything and your families, and good night.
Thank you, Dr. Holt. Moving on to item number 265.18, citizen comments, not agenda items, Ms. Hines. Mr. Madison, if you could just make sure that you fill out one of those forms for us.
Not required by law, thank you. Um, I don't know where to start here. Let's start with titles. Dr. Holt, your title was executive director at your previous job. A letter came to this district, which I FOIA'd, that backed you up, dated September thirteenth, that executive director, senior director, and all those were considered assistant superintendents. We are now looking at a boatload of assistant superintendents. Fontana Schools, after you have left, has stopped all emotional support, climate control, everything that you are bringing to this district, from a district that was much larger than this, has ceased and ceased doing everything that you are bringing here to Wayne Westland schools. I do have the organizational chart when you were there, and I do know the current one now. Everything has been eliminated. I'd like to welcome everyone to Wayne Westland Urban Schools now, because we've been declared an urban school district by our superintendent. Staff from out of state, the woman that did show up here today was from out of state, so we are promoting from out of state. And please, for all our sakes, you are a female using the word "my babies." If a male, if I said that, or any other male in this room said "my babies," we'd be considered sex offenders. Please stop using that term. Thank you.
Anyone else? Moving on to item number 266.18, review. I'm sorry?
I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry, ma'am, I didn't see your hand.
That's okay, I'm slow.
Oh, it's okay. Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Marney Vigiletti. I just wanted, I touched base with the superintendent. She came over to Taft Galloway, I think it was last week, and met with some of the teachers and the parents, and I just wanted to voice my concern. She seems like she's really taking care of it, but the issues with the discipline and no consequences, they're catering to the troubled children rather than giving them discipline. And my son is in a class with a couple of the third graders that are just acting out, misbehaving very, very much, and they're catering to that child rather than the ones that are there for education. So, every day, they're evacuating their classroom to stay safe, because this child's flipping desks and throwing chairs and throwing scissors. So, each day that my child is missing out, that's an hour a day, that's five hours a week, that's twenty hours a month of education that he's missing out on. And now, I've looked at all the numbers coming through that, you know, we're going to be closing all these schools, but I think some of the reasons are because children, parents don't want to deal with us, they're moving them out of the district. We've lost four teachers in the last two years. I know two kids out of my son's classroom this year have left in the last couple of weeks. I have three children in this district and I am about to move my kids out of this district if something doesn't take place, if there are not consequences for these kids. There was another student in third grade that knocked down a teacher, pushed over our principal. And as she just stated, our principal is leaving our school district next, at the end of this week because of, I think, just the behavior issues. And they're not getting any support from the, I don't know if it's from the Board of Education. I know there's other people that we've called that they kind of just said, "Oh, it's okay, it's okay," and kind of pushed it under the rug. But I just feel that something needs to come into place. We haven't had even like a code of conduct book printed. The principal's been at our school for two years. The family handbook hasn't been done in a couple of years. I mean, things like that where we could have a teacher say, "This is the recommendations, this is what we're going to do in the classroom." Parents, teachers, students sign it so they know their expectations as children too. And I just feel that something kind of needs to take place and there needs to be an order of this is what happens. If a child gets in trouble for three times in one week, they get a detention. If the child gets three detentions, they get a suspension. If the child gets three suspensions, they get an expulsion. Something needs to be happen, something needs to happen so that these children understand there are consequences and if they don't follow and behave, then they have to serve those consequences.
If you don't mind, if you'll please fill out that form for us so that we can make sure that your concerns are answered at a timely manner. Okay, thank you so much.
I know I'm not really supposed to ask questions, but I kind of.
It's okay, please state your name.
Oh, Sarah. That bringing in, is that going to take stuff off the resource room, even one person? Like, for instance, did you see Ms. Harkema today?
No.
Yes, you did. What happened in her room?
The kid was screaming.
So where did Ms. Harkema go?
In the hall.
Yeah. Last week, he qualifies for four days a week. All this money coming from special ed, my kid is not getting it. So, last week, he got to go one time because he is in these, she is in these other classrooms. We love her, she's great. We'd be in Canton right now if it wasn't for her, you know? But he's being pulled out and not getting the resource he needs. And I'm pretty sure that's illegal. I mean, if this IP's not being followed and he's not getting the resource room he is supposed to be getting, then what is the point of being here? It's kind of like we're, I mean, he's only in first grade and he's seeing these kids being left in the resource room upstairs while all this is going on, you know? He knows the kid's name and he shouldn't know no fourth grader's name, you know, like... I just don't understand like how one person is going to take that load off of all the resources that are being pulled from these kids. And not even having to be special needs, like just in general, regular kids are being pulled out of the classroom. How many hours a week is that happening? You know, it's, every day he comes home and I ask him, "Did you see Ms. Harkema today?" And he either had to go back downstairs because somebody's throwing desks, or he just didn't get called at all. And it's sad because all this $4 million that's going from special ed, we're not even saying. But what about my special ed kid? Just because, should I tell him to start throwing desks? You know, like, it's sad. It's pathetic.
Thank you. Can you make sure that we get your information, please? Thank you. Anyone else? Yes, ma'am. If you can please state your name loud so that we can know who.
My name's Tiffany Figurito. And I have a daughter at Taft Galloway. Marnie was speaking about her just a minute ago. She's one that has currently left the, the school and the district. Actually, we're back and forth with a teacher right now who stepped back into place because the third grade teacher quit because of these misbehaved children and not having the backing and the support that she needed. In the meantime, while I understand that Ms. Holt is very active and she witnessed a little bit of it, I, I'm assuming from what our meeting was about last Thursday. However, we're, we're being asked for more time. And this has been taking place since the first day of school, so my daughter is out of time. We are out of time. She is not receiving an education at all because she's sitting at home because she can't go to school because she had scissors thrown at her face and nothing was done about it. Chairs, desks being flipped over on her on a daily basis, nothing being done about it. We're losing students, we're losing teachers, we're losing principals. And still, we just need more time. Like, the five months has been time enough, I think. I, every child deserves an education, the misbehaved ones do too, but the parents that work their butts off teaching their kids to behave, especially in public places, I think that should take precedence over a mom that doesn't deem it necessary to have her child show up on the first day of a fresh start to a halfway through the school year, year. She, you know, that shouldn't be.
Please make sure that we get your information. Don't leave here without all the ladies that spoke. Please make sure that we get that. Anyone else? All right. So moving on to item number 266.18, review and recommendations, Board of Education's, Ms. Madison.
I deeply apologize to the families for what I've just heard tonight and what's going on. And that is a big concern that I have here too also tonight. Unfortunately, as one board member, my hands are completely tied. I serve in no capacity or role that would allow me to be able to assist you directly in any way. And I just want to make that clear and I apologize. And I certainly hope that as a district, that we can get this addressed. I know that this has been a problem. We are supposed to have rules, there's supposed to be structure. Regardless of the social, emotional support services that we're saying we need, that doesn't prevent us from making rules stick now. And I certainly hope that we can hear and I hope that you do follow up and come back to a board meeting and let us know if this is being addressed and taken care of. I'm concerned as you are. And I would certainly like to see that rules are starting to be enforced on that. Please follow up.
Thank you, Ms. Madison. Mr. Cox.
Good evening. And I'd like to thank William and Christian from Walker-Winter Elementary School for leading us in the pledge. I was wondering how Christian plays basketball and eats macaroni and cheese. He doesn't do that same time, does he? I would like to thank my colleagues on the board for serving in the capacities, the officerships that you, that you each hold. Congratulations on your reelection. It was a hard fought contest this evening and you were able to pull it out. I'd also like to thank those that represent us to the MASP and Wayne County for, for your involvement there. Tonight, we made a decision concerning the cost of school lunches and, and absolutely confident that nobody really wanted to do that. And we were looking at an enhancement millage that brought more money to the district, but we're being very fiscally responsible, I believe, and I think it's appropriate to try to keep some pace with our responsibilities concerning the lunch. So, I would like to thank all the educators who are going to be receiving ORS refunds. And I think that that decision went the right way and I was very happy to see that. On the 30th of November, I attended a workshop with Scott Morell of MASP and I haven't had the opportunity to say so, but I thought that was an extremely valuable experience. And I'm glad that that was put on and we were able to attend that. And John Silvery this evening made a presentation concerning what the community's thoughts are about how grades could be, should be configured. And I know that the costing component of that is going to be a very large part of ultimately what we decide needs to be done and I'm looking forward to that. And thank you and good evening to everyone.
Thank you. Ms. Heinz.
I'd like to thank the students that did the pledge of allegiance and I love seeing the Dolphins, awesome school spirit. Too, I'd like to congratulate the budget. I'm really excited about the budget, guys are doing a great job. Congratulations to our new superintendent. And I do like the way the structure is becoming because there is a lot of childhood trauma that's going on, there's a lot of poverty, the district is changing. So, and I definitely understand as parents, and I'm a parent myself with the behavioral problems. So that's something that we definitely need to address. And I want to do more with the community, like we have to do more with the, getting more mentors, getting more sponsorships and have people come in and help the children in the classroom because that is a serious problem. Because like you are saying as well, if you have one disruptive child, that does create problems in the classrooms. That's something we definitely going to look into, that I definitely want to help you on, whatever, you know, as my, to the board, we, we are all working together on that issue. So thank you for bringing that again to our attention. And I'd just like to say, we know this is very, you know, troubling times, a lot of things are going on. We have to just, like I said, work together as a community. We have to put our children first, they're like the most important, making sure they're educated. And we have, you know, as well as a balanced budget to make sure. So, you know, some of the restructuring is for a particular reason, to make sure that we're taking, getting the best out of the money that we do have in the district. And we have been financially stable to have a really great budget at this time. So, that's all I have to say right now. But we are concerned about, you know, those issues that's going on.
Thank you, Ms. Heinz. Mr. Buckle, please.
Yes, thank you. Quickly reflecting on Dr. Holt's presentation, comments. I'm a part of that majority that does not like change, but looking back at what we've done and what we haven't done, and how it's affected or not affected student learning, I think maybe it's time that we try some different approach. And so I'm more than supportive of what you're trying to do. With the question of discipline, it's more an art form than it is a science. Sometimes you, you treat an incident one way, sometimes it's better to treat it a different way. So, discipline is always going to be an issue, no matter what we do. We're not going to satisfy everybody. Hopefully, we'll get it right more often than we get it wrong. This is January, we've reorganized for the new school year. But from a different perspective, the year's half over. Our students are looking forward to, to summer break now. We're at that halfway point. Two weeks ago, Mrs. Model and I traveled the white knuckle trip to Lansing in an ice storm for an MSA, MASP conference. And it was, excuse me, all about the use of social media. And social media is a great thing, if you're into that sort of thing. I don't have the skill to do it, but if you're into it, it's a great powerful tool. We should continue to use it, but the takeaway is while we continue to use it, we have to be very, very guarded for those people who would abuse it. So it, it's kind of a double edged sword there. This past Saturday, Dr. Holt, Mrs. Model and I were at School Craft College for a day-long conference on a number of things. It was presented by our auditing firm, Plant Moran, and also by one of our legal firms, Clark Hill. And there were a number of topics, like, do we have an appropriate policy for drones? How do we address fraud or uncover it should it drop up in our district? How do, how to interpret our budget? All of those things came about. I think the one thing that, that struck me more than anything else was the adequacy study. The early reports, the statewide adequacy study that is actually being redone for a second time, shows that really it takes about 95, almost $9,600 to adequately educate a student here in the state of Michigan. And that does not address the cost of transportation, nor does it address those special needs students, whether it be special education or, or learning disabilities in the area of reading. And it only addresses about four and a half percent of the 39% of the education dollar that goes to retirement costs. I hope that somewhere down the line, our governor and our legislature take a look at this adequacy study and realize that they are underfunding each of our students in excess of $2,000 each. It was a very eye-opening presentation and I hope that you hear more about it in the months to come. And I hope the legislature hears a little bit about it as well. That's for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Buckle. Dr. Weaver.
Yes, thank you. Madam President, sometimes you, when you're, when you're up here, you get to vote and then sometimes you get to explain that vote. You get caught in between what must be done to move our district forward and what has been done in the past to keep our district together. I am voted no, not because I do not believe in Dr. Holt, I do. Or I do not believe in people from our district that are moving in positions because I do and I support them 100%. And the new hires that would be taking place. So I don't want any of my statements to make anyone feel that I'm against the process. But I will say this. Anytime we need to buy trucks, we buy them. Anytime we need to lease or buy buses, we buy them. Anytime we need to go out and get technology, we go out and we do that. And I understand that all those funds are Taft and, and how all that works. But the bottom line for me and the reason I voted no is because every time it comes to our existing employees, we start talking, throwing out things like, "Oh, we've got to guard the bottom line and we don't want an emergency manager to come in our district." I think it's time that, that we start thinking creatively and, and move forward with the employees we have. We hire teachers that are eligible for bridge cards. People in, and I have to be transparent with you and I will be transparent with the public. My wife works for the district. So I'm not, I'm not speaking about her. I'm speaking about the, the employees that we have. And I wanted to be transparent about that. Union representatives are here. I'm not saying this because of them, or I need their money, because in the, in the past, they have not supported me. But I, I just feel like it's time that we do something to look at the employees we have and take care of them. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Weaver. Ms. Model.
I'm a little disappointed that our person didn't show up for our National Honor Society and hopefully we can reschedule that for next month. Because I, I think she was a little disappointed, you know, that they didn't get their recognition. So, hopefully we'll have that on the agenda for next week. You plan on having a meeting next week?
Uh, next month.
Will that be soon enough?
Okay.
Thank you. I want to thank you for electing me vice president. This'll be the third time I've served and it'll probably, it'll be the last time I serve as vice president. Because I, in the past, I've set myself up to two years in any position and you're done. But I know with having a new superintendent and maybe we needed a little bit more consistency to get through the first year with her being in our district. So, I opened myself up for being vice president for the third year and I do appreciate your support, people. Thank you. And congratulations to everybody else. We've, we're still sitting here, we're still strong, and we're still moving forward. Change is scary. Change can be sad, but change is inevitable. And we have to look down the road. We can't just deal with the here and now. We have to look forward because we'll be there sooner than we expect to be. And we have to be ready for it. We have to deal with it now before we get there. And sometimes those decisions are a little tough and sometimes they're, they're easy. But we always have to look ahead. We sat here through a budget presentation and some of us did not ask questions. And that isn't because we don't know what to ask, we've already asked the questions. Knowing that, you know, it was announced that we received these in advance, it gives us the opportunity to make phone calls and ask those important questions before we get a chance to vote. So, to the person who's just watching this, it makes us sometimes look like we're not engaged, but we are. We've already made sure that we understand what it is that we are voting on and what it is that we are deciding to do with the limited assets that we do have. I've sat through a couple of meetings now in the community and I have pointed out to them that a school district is no different than a family who's on a fixed income. You have no other options available to you for having money coming in. And the seniors that I said this to, they understood. And I think it might be the first time they got to see it from a different side. This is a fixed income that we are on and we need to spend our dollars wisely. Hopefully, we are doing that as we move forward and making the changes that we need. Hopefully, we are doing that as we move forward and making the changes that we need to make to make our district more successful, to make our students more successful, and to make sure that we can offer them the quality education that they truly deserve. Welcome back, everybody. I'm glad everybody made it back safely.
Thank you, Mrs. Madell. Okay, so, two points I want to speak on, and first of all, I want to say that safety is our number-one priority in the district over anything. It breaks my heart to hear you have to come and say that, but at the same token, I, we have spoke, I have spoke with our superintendent, and we understand some of the things and the challenges that are going on, and as she mentioned in her report, those are things that we are working on. And I understand the frustration of being a parent, and you're like, "Okay, we need it right now." Things take time, but we are definitely, we definitely are working on it, and we definitely understand. And so I trust that our superintendent is going to make sure that we get on top of some of the issues that is being faced. I also, we talk about some of the changes that are happening. I know for a fact from the conversations that I've had with Dr. Holt, that compensating our employees is top on her agenda. She knows where we are, and we know the concessions that were given, and that's something that she really wants to do. But we also understand that there's contracts that are in place, and you have, there are certain legal things and things on how you work it, work things out. So there's just, it's, it would be nice just to come in and say, "Okay, let's just give everybody this," but we have to work within certain guidelines and do certain things. And we trust in that the superintendent that we have in place is doing everything possible to make sure that everyone in our family, and anyone who knows me, as I've been sitting in this seat, is that I consider us all family. And so if I consider us family, we're not going to take care of one person, not take care of other people, but we have to do things in order, and we have to do things the way that they're, the way that things should be done to make sure that everything is done correctly, if you get what I'm saying. So with that being said, I understand the frustrations from all sides, but I do know that we have a superintendent in place, that we have trusted as a board to look into some of the things that are going on and to find solutions. Rome was not built in a day. Wayne Westland has changed over the years, and things good, things bad, and whatever has done, it took time to get there, and it's going to take time to fix. So all I'm asking is that we all just try to get past the frustrations that we have, trust that we have a leader in place that is going to try to do what she can to make this a district that you all are happy to live in, a district that you're happy to send your children to, a district that you're happy to work at, a district that the board is, that we are proud to represent. So with that all being said, thank you for coming out this evening, thank you for taking time out your day to come and listen and be a part of it, and please, don't just wait till something happens to decide that you want to come to a meeting. Come to, start coming to the meetings. If you can't come to a meeting, we provide where you can see it on YouTube, but you have to be involved. We can't just, and I'm talking about myself, just general, not just school, anything, we can't just wait till the building is on fire and then decide that we're going to come and we're going to come and have a conversation. We have to be involved in the process, and being involved in the process helps you to understand things a little bit better so that we can all have an understanding of how things. I have to say that Dr. Holt has been very transparent in the things that she is doing, and I trust her, and I stand behind her, and I believe in what she's doing, and I think that once we get past the fear, once we get past the changes, and we get on the other side, we're going to have a district that we're going to all be proud of. And I thank each and every one of you for coming, and at this time, I'll take a motion to adjourn. So moved by Mrs. Madell, supported by Mrs. Heinz, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We are dismissed.